Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. It's sixteen hundred hours, sixteen oh one. And I'm gonna, we, so welcome to, what's the date? May twenty twenty-three. I can't believe it, May is this far ahead. The twenty-third of May, council meeting for Saint John City Council. I will just say quickly that May is my favorite month and it's almost all over already. I'm gonna hand this over to councillor Sullivan to read our land acknowledgement tonight. Councillor?
Thank you, your worship. The land on which the city of Saint John, or Mennequist, is situated is the traditional territory of the Wallishtweek. The Wallishtweek, along with their indigenous neighbours, the Mi'kmaq and Peska Tomacadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the seventeen hundreds that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let us pause and reflect.
I'll ask everyone to stand for the National Anthem, please. Okay, we have a short night, it looks like, on the agenda tonight. I will say that councillor Harris is trying to get on. He just sent me a quick text to say that he can't log on, I think. Hang on here. Can't seem to get his internet logged in, so we may see him partly through the meeting as well. Okay, city clerk, first item. Next item?
Thank you, your worship. That first item is two point one on your agenda, and that's approval of minutes of May fifteen.
Minutes of May fifteenth. Councillor Hickey and the deputy on the question, all in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next is the approval of the agenda, and there are four additions from Committee of the Whole. So those would be seventeen point one, which is a letter regarding local governance reform, seventeen point two, CMHC termination agreement, seventeen point three, listing agreement with Brunswick Brokers, and seventeen four, termination of lease.
Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. Councillor Stewart and councillor Lowe on the question. All in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next, disclosures of conflict of interest, if there are any.
Seeing none. Next item?
Next item is the consent agenda.
Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. I would move five point one through to five point nine, please.
Take a second, there. Councillor Sullivan, on the question. All in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next is members' comments.
It's your two-minute round. No politics and, what's the other thing? Oh, no city business. Just fine, just good, just good news tonight. Councillor Sullivan, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Just quickly, as May is coming to a close and summer is upon us, all sorts of activities to spend your time. I spend most of my summer on the water, as many of you know, so just kind of a safety warning, as you start to get in your boats and enjoy the Uliluquis, Saint John River, Uliluquis, Saint John River, and/or the Bay of Fundy. To be safe, please don't drink and drive. Please make sure you wear your life jackets and have a wonderful time on this wonderful resource that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ogden?
Yes, for the next three weeks, forty-six schools, community organizations, and Boys and Girls Club, et cetera, are going to be planting marigolds that they've been growing since February, that we raised money for in December and January, all throughout the city, the greater Saint John area. I think we'll be close to the five million mark this year, and they'll, we've also painted two hundred murals. We're just starting mural two hundred and one on Bayside Drive in front of the old East Saint John School. And I think that we will be at the tenth Guinness World Record this year. We've also painted about a hundred homes for seniors and those in need, and about cleaned about two hundred vacant lots and planted about a thousand spruce trees. So for the next three weeks, you'll be seeing children planting all over the city. And so I just, please beware, but please remember that those were grown in classrooms by our children when you see them in the summer, and they have to be deadheaded, weeded, and watered and such. And it certainly is a major tourist attraction now in our city, and I just want to thank all those teachers, volunteers, and students. They number now about eighty thousand citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hickey?
Thank you very much, your worship. Last week, the city celebrated its two-hundred-and-thirty-eighth birthday. So happy birthday to the city of Saint John, in recognition of Loyalist Day. I was happy to both attend a flag raising and a dinner afterwards, in which councillor Sullivan spoke very well and offered a great tribute to our community and what we've accomplished, and the history of our city as well. It was also, the same day was Haitian Independence Day. So I thought it was really interesting, and our two flagpoles are in front of City Hall. I'm not sure that there's ever been a Union Jack beside a Haitian flag before. I thought that was pretty cool and showed a lot of the diversity that we're, we're seeing in the community, and that certainly this council is championing as well. Last week was also UNB's convocation, so congratulations to all of our graduates.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Edmond?
Thank you, Mayor. So Champlain Heights Association is having their Clean and Green this Saturday from eleven till two. It's gonna take place at the Swanson Street Park. They put on a great little event there, and I just wanted to mention that it is the time of the year where the snow goes away and people are starting to clean up. The city does allow pickup twice a year for three bulky items. You can actually go right on the city of Saint John website and put requests in under permits, licenses, and service requests. And it could also be helpful if you see a pothole to put in a request online to make it a little easier for staff to get the city looking all great. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Norton, over to you.
Your worship, nothing, nothing specific to mention, but it was interesting when we were looking at the headlines throughout this week. I, I think it gives a bit of a glimpse about the good things happening in our community. City Lighthouse Gets New Lease on Life. It's going to Graham and Anne, if you didn't know, to our Charlotte County friends. Test of Emergency Alert Notification System. If you haven't signed up, it's a good thing to participate in, lets you know what's happening when those EMO alerts come in. Saint John Night Market Seeks Applications. You're an aspiring entrepreneur. Give it a kick. Area 506 Waterfront Container Village Celebrates Opening Weekend in Saint John. If you like colors and more, head on down. Loyalist Day Events Return After Four-Year Break. That's good news. COVID is on its way out. Loyalist Day is on its way back in. Flag Raised in Support of LGBTQ+. We're all in support as a, as a welcoming and inclusive community. Another good news headline. City Looks to Cut More Red Tape to Address Housing Shortage. Saint John Launches New Industrial Parks Website. Volunteers Expand Carnegie Trail Work in Rockwood. Fantastic work there. Wellington Complex to Open in June. Five hundred and thirteen K for Saint John Active Transportation Project. Thank you to the deputy, our MP, deputy acting on behalf of the mayor. I know that councillor Lowe, Hickey, and I'm sure I'm leaving others that were there as well today to receive that, that gift. Saint John Aims to Adopt Social Procurement Policy by the End of June. There wasn't one negative headline in there. Like, a bunch of headlines, no bulletin specifically, but we're sometimes the hardest on ourselves. That's good news. So thank you to our Director of Communications for sending that out, but if you're reading the headlines, you're reading some good news. So, good job.
Thank you, councillor Norton. That was all good news, and that's only just one week's worth of announcements, so it's pretty fantastic what's going on here. I will say also, congratulations to UNBSJ grads. I did attend graduation on Friday afternoon, and it was very nice. I think we did about three hundred and fifty maybe grads, so pretty impressive. City clerk, over to you. Next item?
Next, we have a number of proclamations, your worship. So the first one is seven point one on your agenda, and this is for Disability Awareness Week.
Whereas the municipality of Saint John is committed to assisting citizens with disabilities to participate fully in our community, and whereas many persons living with disabilities face barriers in the areas of employment, access to information, transportation, housing, education, recreation, and other disability-related supports, and whereas we believe that citizens with disabilities should have the chance to access disability-related supports to improve their opportunities in New Brunswick, and whereas we support the theme accessibility equals inclusion. Now therefore I, Mayor Donna Nod Riordan of Saint John, do hereby request the citizens of Saint John to join with our council in recognizing persons with disabilities and their role in our community by the observance of Disability Awareness Week, and to hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-eighth to June third, twenty twenty-two-three, as Disability Awareness Week in the city of Saint John.
Next is seven point two, Saint John Police Retirees' Day proclamation.
Whereas the city of Saint John and the Saint John Police recognize June eighth as Saint John Police Retirees' Day, and whereas the Saint John Police retirees will be recognized for their invaluable service, commitment to excellence, valor, and dedication to duty, and whereas, as a direct result of their professional contributions during their service, Saint John Police retirees enhance the work, sorry, enhance the policing service delivery model to the people who live, work, and visit this great city of Saint John, and whereas it is important that all citizens understand and appreciate the pride, passion, engagement, and sacrifices Saint John Police retirees have made in safeguarding life and property so that together we can have a safe, secure, healthy community. Now therefore I, Mayor Donna Nod Riordan of Saint John, do hereby proclaim June eighth, twenty twenty-three, as Saint John Police Retirees' Day, in honor of those whose dedication, professionalism, and significant daily contributions have kept our citizens and communities safe. Next item, city clerk?
And the final proclamation is seven point three, and this is for Shriners International Day in the city of Saint John.
Whereas Shriners International is a well-known fraternity dedicated towards fun, fellowship, and philanthropy, with two hundred thousand members belonging to over two hundred chapters through Canada, the United States, Mexico, Republic of Panama, Philippines, Europe, Europe, and South America, and whereas its members support twenty-seven children's hospitals and treatment centers, including a hospital in Montreal, with a one-of-a-kind international pediatric specialty healthcare system that was founded by the Shriners Fraternity in nineteen twenty-two, and provides all care regardless of the cause to patients or their families, and whereas it is fitting and appropriate to acknowledge and celebrate this wonderful fraternity and its rich history on June the sixth, the anniversary of the day Imperial Council of Shriners International was founded. Now therefore I, Mayor Donna Nod Riordan of Saint John, do hereby declare the day of June sixth to be Shriners International Day in the city of Saint John. Okay, next item, city clerk?
Next, we have a presentation. It's item eight point one on the agenda, and I'd like to welcome guests Wendy Brooks and Debbie Thomas to present on the New Brunswick International Student Program.
All right, the floor is yours. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you too. So lovely people. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to come to speak this evening. We wanted to bring awareness to the fact that we have over twenty-two different students from different nations and communities, and we'd like to help bring awareness to that fact.
And that they play an extremely important role in our schools and also volunteering in our communities. So my partner, Wendy, will start the PowerPoint.
Okay, so we sent you a PowerPoint, so I'll just go through it with you, if that's okay. Not sure who I'm looking at. Oh, there it is. Okay. Uh-oh. Okay, that's fine, I can just go from here. Okay, so my name is Wendy Brooks, and I'm the Home State Administrator for MBISP South, so I work alongside Debbie, and helping find home stays and placing students in the Saint John area, well, in Southern New Brunswick. So from Saint Stevens, Stephen, to Sussex. So I just moved here last year from Ontario, and so I, Debbie reminds me that it's not Saint Stevens, it's Saint Stephen, so I will get it eventually. So our New Brunswick International Student Program, we welcome students that are ages eleven to eighteen years old, all, from all over the world. The average age that comes here to Southern New Brunswick seems to be about grade eleven. This year alone, we had one middle schooler, and then the rest were high schoolers. Do I change this myself? Oh, I do it myself. Oh. So you were my eighth council to speak in front of, and this is the first time I had to do it myself, so independence, that's very good. So, so students, they come from all over the world and they live with home stays. So home stays are just people like you and I. It can be a retiree, it can be a couple, it can be a whole big family, as long as they have a spare bedroom with a bed, a window, and a door. May sound funny that I'm telling you that, but you'd be surprised, not all rooms have doors and windows. They can host. So, and then we also get them to have a criminal record check, of course, and so anyone can do it. All of you can do it. So our students come and they attend public schools here. They volunteer in our communities. They get involved in school projects, in extracurricular activities. So we just try to give them the very best Canadian experience as possible. So the pictures that you'll see in any of the slides, they are all students that are here in Southern New Brunswick right now, studying here, so. I was just about to say next, but I guess, okay. So this is actually our group from Harborview High School this year. I can't remember the exact amount that they had, but it was our largest number in the school. Thirty-five? Thirty-five. And so Canada is actually one of the most popular destinations for international students to come, and New Brunswick is huge. People love coming, the students love coming to New Brunswick. So alone, just in Southern New Brunswick, we had two hundred and twenty-four students this year, and that was about the same in every district, so that's a lot of students all throughout New Brunswick from all around the world. So in Southern New Brunswick alone this year, we had twenty-two countries represented from our program. So you'll see some of them here. I have listed some of them, but not all. So we're really excited to be able to bring those countries to New Brunswick, because obviously not all of us can afford to go to all those places. I know I can't, so it's lovely to bring them here. We can learn about their culture, about their language, their food, and it's just really great to have them in our, in our school programs. So what does having, we know that it benefits them by letting them come, but how does it benefit us by allowing them to come to our communities? One way is obvious, immigration and population. Some of them will come and they'll stay for a year or, or more, and then their parents sometimes immigrate here, and other times they just come, they go back, or they come again for another year, or they even come here and go to university or college here. Something they teach us, they teach our communities about other cultures and people and languages, and I talked about that before, about diversity. And so I know I am originally from New Brunswick, so when I first got here, I felt like I had to say that to everyone, that we're not overtaking New Brunswick. So, but yeah, when I first left, when I left New Brunswick when I was ten, you didn't see a lot of different cultures, and that was many, many years ago, but now you do, and there's a lot of diversity in New Brunswick, which makes me very proud to live here, and our program brings even more of that to New Brunswick. Having international students here, they contribute to our education system financially and culturally, culturally. So I already talked about culturally, so now I'm gonna let Debbie talk about money.
So basically, if you look at that picture, you might notice that it says Saint Stephen. They actually were able to purchase that bus because of the funds that they were gathering over the years by having international students at their school. Each student brings in about twenty-five thousand dollars a year to our community at large. The larger portion of that money percentage goes to our schools, and they are able to use that in any way that they see fit within the school. It's not designated money for books or for a particular course, so that's a good thing for our schools. It gives them flexibility in what they're able to offer in the school system. Also, a portion goes to the district, and they use that money to support English as an additional language in our schools, not only for our international students, but the newcomers that come in. So it's a win-win on both sides. And so really, when you think about that side of it, it really makes an impact in our school system, not only culturally but financially as well. So it's a win-win for us.
So yes, their tuition does bring money to our schools and to our community, but also they spend money, just like any young person does when they're here, and so they are spending money in clothing stores, or they're buying souvenirs for home. Their family comes and visits us and spends more money, and so they are bringing more money to New Brunswick as well as more jobs for our local community. So I already said, they decide to go to college here sometimes, and how can you help us? Why are we here today? And the reason why we're here today is to help, ask you for help with community awareness, because if we don't have the community aware of our program, then we won't have places for them to live, and then we have to say no and not bring them here. So that's really all we're asking for, is just your help, your suggestions on how we can make the community more aware of our program. So some ways that we do now, we have brochures, I, we actually just got, well, this one's a little dark, but we got a new agency. We're finishing each other's sentences already. We got a new agency, and so they put together some images for us, so you may see them on Facebook. I know I do, but, and also welcome signs. Some of our communities put welcome signs in their communities to welcome the international students. So not necessarily always asking for home stays, but just allowing the community to know that we're here and that, so that they're aware, because we have been actually surprised over the last little while that a lot of people don't know that we exist, so. Posting ads on your social media, maybe that's something your council could do for us or on your website, that would be another question we have for you. And also inviting Debbie and I or our students to any community events, or things like this, where we could come and talk to you about our program and other people, or even just getting our students involved in different things around the community. I know, I believe at Saint Stephen, they have a group going there, they're just getting all the kids to do like cleanup, and so it's just, and cleaning up the community, and then we'll wear our big blue sweaters, because we always have a different color sweater every year, and so, and it just shows who we are, and then we try to get them to wear that, just so that the community sees and recognizes us, so. And this is just, the more people who know about us, the more home stays we will have, just what I said before, and the more students that can come, which will benefit us and our communities and our families. So that is all from me. If anyone has any questions?
I've got a quick question for you. How long has the program been going on?
That's twenty-five years.
Ooh, I don't even remember hearing about it. And my youngest is thirty-two, so I would have been in public education in those days.
That's right.
I do have a couple of questions for you. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Wendy and Debbie. Nice to see you again, Debbie. Haven't seen you in years, since District Office. A very respectable program, and certainly immigration is something that we strive to increase. So you have an audience right now. Can you tell them how they can host a student? Who do they get in contact with? What's the protocol to go through?
Well, I, myself, you would get in contact with me, or, so we have brochures and posters here, and on this particular brochure, it actually has my information on it, so I can leave some of them with you. If you go onto our website, you can actually click on, well, for Saint John, we have four different coordinators, so you can click on their name and contact them, all their information is there. There's also on our website, aei.ca, I think that's all that it is. I have it saved. So you would click on there, and then it will have a little questionnaire, very short, just like three or four questions, and then that will send it directly to us, and then we would be in contact with you.
So they go to aei.com?
Dot ca.
Dot ca.
Yeah.
And they'll find all the information there.
And then you'll see it right there, it should, it will say something on the lines of, would you like to be? Would you like to host? Yeah, she has it memorized more than me, I've only been here a year, so she's been looking at it longer.
Okay, well, thanks very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Councillor Edmond, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. This is very exciting. So you had mentioned that you had two hundred and twenty-four students in our area in twenty twenty-two. I have a few questions, just wondering how many could you, like, would you have the capacity to take on through your organization if we had home stays for them?
If we had home stays, we certainly, in the Saint John area, we have twenty at Simon's High, and we would have around twenty-four at Saint John, Saint Malakies, and a little bit more at Saint John High, and then Harborview has the largest number right now. So we probably could take a hundred and fifty and pushing up further, just in our area.
Just curious whether or not there's Just curious whether or not there's any cultural competency, or any sort of onboarding training that happens with the home stays as the newcomers are coming into the city?
So, we have an orientation session in the late August typically, where we bring our home stays together, new home stays and home stays that we've had in the past, so that we can actually talk about those types of items. Do we do a fantastic job? No. There's always more to be done. But it's an initial startup for people, and we have, we had three sessions during the year for home stays to talk about homesickness, how to work with a student that's having some difficulties at school, or communication links and things of that nature. Because there is a lot to it. And at the end of the day, we are here to support our home stays, as well as our students and our schools, for sure.
Have you made any connections?
I just add to that. Also, with coordinators, so every school is designated a coordinator. And so if you host a student, you're not alone. The coordinator is, is your partner to help you, and as well as us. So, so yeah, so there's constant, we do have newsletters and different things where we give tips and hints. And so it's not like you're in this just put in it and you're in it alone. It's 100% support.
Have you developed any partnerships with Prude or the Newcomers Centre in St. John?
That's a very good question. In the past, there would have been a connection through the district, that we would have worked in that manner. But we haven't reached out directly to Prude at this point.
Okay. The only other thing that I had is, I was wondering if the students get an opportunity to go to NBCC and UNB. I see that as a great opportunity. We'd like to keep them here if we can.
Absolutely. And that's what we do. We take them on tours of UNBSJ, and to NBCC, and also in Fredericton area with Stu and UNB and the Arts and Cultural Craft College. And on June 2nd, I'm going to Maude with the group's students. So we try to give them as much as we can, as far as, we're here, you know our communities, why not stay and start university here?
Great. Debbie, I'll send a follow-up email to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Norton.
Thank you, your worship. It's good having you here. It's good having my, my former boss here as well. So, in city terms, she's my director, commissioner, so, she still makes me nervous. But 5371, I still remember the number. With that being said, Debbie, I remember the first time that we talked about you making a bit of, a bit of a tour around respective municipal councils, and promoting the good work that AEI does, especially with its international students. And it's good to see that still going on, because you prefaced that with, we're the only council that allows you to do your job and manage your own slide deck. So that's how we scaffold our learning here. By the time you get here, you know exactly what to do. So, I did want to say, it's a bit of a testimony, but most of the educators and members of the community that have, have expressed an interest in this, always come away by saying, you know, the supports were always there through AEI. You need very simple things, private bedroom, access to internet, three, three meals a day, and ability to have some transportation, attend some special events, which everybody in here does, and including a lot of our listeners. But they always said that the payoff was for them, much more so than the international students that were calling St. John home. So, I know that there's some that I work with during my day job, and they always say the payoff is, has been for them, and they'll continue to do it going forward with two and three home stay students in a row. So, thank you for what you're doing. And we can only hope to grow those numbers at our respective high schools, and make that 250 in Southern New Brunswick go a little bit higher by, by having some more, some more billets available. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, councillor. Debbie, I'm just curious too, if there's any other requirements for, to come, other than you would have to have, obviously, the funds to come? Anything else? You need to have a minimal amount of French or English, or?
Well, that's an interesting question, because the students actually do an online assessment of their language skills before they arrive. So we would have students that would have very low levels of communication skills, and others that would speak better than Wendy or I. It just depends on their background, their experiences.
Excellent. Well, listen.
They really love it, though.
I bet they do.
Coming to St. John, I can only say that we bring in agents to the city as well, and they love our city. So that's pretty special, too.
That is. What's not to love? I mean, really. Listen, I want to thank you too, Wendy and Debbie, for coming in. It's a really interesting program, and great to hear a little bit about it. And absolutely leave us a bit of information, and we'll get it posted. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We'll leave this here, maybe?
Yep, leave that there. That's perfect. Thank you. Next item, city. Oh, I need to receive, a motion to receive councillor Sullivan and councillor deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
Next item is item 15.1, a letter regarding Kidney Cancer Canada, requests for proclamation. Recommendation is to refer to the clerk to prepare the proclamation.
Moved by the deputy, seconded by councillor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
15-2 is from the same group requesting to present to council. Recommendation, refer to clerk to schedule.
Councillor Sullivan and councillor Redmond on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
And next are items that came from Committee of the Whole. And so the first of those is with respect to a letter regarding local governance reform, and that would be item 17.1. And the resolution is that the mayor execute a letter on behalf of council, generally in the form attached here too, to the Minister of Local Governance and Local Governance Reform on Bill 45, Local Governance Commission Act, outlining the city's concerns regarding Bill 45.
Thank you, deputy. Councillor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next is 17.2, and this is a CMHC request for termination of 1957 agreement. And the resolution is that the city enter into the termination agreement, and the form is presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting on May 23rd, for the purpose of acknowledging the termination of an agreement between the city and the Central Mortgage and Housing Corporation dated October 1, 1957, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said agreement, said termination agreement, and any documents ancillary thereto.
Deputy and councillor Hickey on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Next is 17-3, and this is a listing agreement with Brunswick Brokers. And the resolution is that the city enter into a listing agreement with Brunswick Brokers Limited, generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on May 23rd, for the purpose of engaging expert support in a complex land negotiation, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said listing agreement and any other documents ancillary thereto.
Deputy and councillor Lowe on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Councillor Redmond opposed. Motion carried. Thank you so much. Next item.
And the final item is 17-4, and this is a termination of shawma hut lease and initiation of new lease with Katsubi. And the resolution is that now therefore be resolved that the city terminate its existing lease with CHS Foods Limited, DBA Shawma Hut for stall four and ancillary space in the city market, and further be it resolved that the city enter into a new five-year lease with 732653 NB Inc., Katsubi effective June 1, 2023, under the terms and conditions as set out by the lease submitted with M&amp;C 2023-116, and further be it resolved that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute any necessary documents ancillary to such purpose.
Councillor Lowe, councillor Stewart on the question. Councillor Redmond, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, wanted to mention, I, I've been voting against a lot of leases in the past, because I thought that some changes needed to happen. And I really feel, in my opinion, that those changes have been made, and that they're, they're great changes. And I just wanted to thank city staff, because I think that these changes will not just help the taxpayers' interests, but also keep the city market sustainable, which is, of course, what we all want. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Councillor Lowe, motion to adjourn. Deputy, all in favor? Opposed. Thank you, everyone. I hear it's still sunny out, so we're all going to scramble out there. Good night.